We have second. I second.
Also, the property moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Also move to have the administrative work of the Open Land Trust to move a stakeholders group requested by the Open Land Trust, whose purpose will be to determine specific areas for not only development, but also conservation in the Broad River area. And this was requested by the Open Land Trust. And I will also ask that that group report back to county within ninety days with your findings. Now, motion. Oh, do we have a motion?
Yes.
Do we get a second?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, carry on, Madam Chair. Third, third motion, and that would be to extend the audit contract for fifteen thousand dollars. And I believe that's what this fiscal year. Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carried.
This time.
We need to give the compliance, Madam Chair.
Pardon me?
We need to have the compliance, Red.
You need to have what?
Compliance, Red, Madam Chair.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information.
I'm going to turn it over to you. Uh, Kurt, you should go ahead on.
No, go on.
I just want them for the compliance.
Yes, ma'am. In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meetings and agendas were posted and furnished to all news media and persons requesting notification.
We will return into open session, and at this time we're going to have the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Kemp and implication by Councilman Saul.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our most kind and gracious heavenly fathers, we humbly bow our heads. We give thanks and praise to you, dear Lord, for all your many blessings in life. Dear God, we pray for your wisdom and knowledge, and all the decisions that we make tonight will be pleasing in your sight. We ask, dear Lord, for special blessing upon our veterans, their families, our first responders. Dear Lord, please protect them and watch over them. We ask all of these things in your holy and precious name. Amen.
Amen. If we get, maybe have a motion for the approval of the agenda. So move.
Second.
Move the property second, that the agenda be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes for April four, April thirteen, and April twenty seven. Do I hear motion? So move.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to say that April thirteen, that was not on, at the meeting.
Okay. That's a record, we flip. We have approval of the minutes. So move.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
You guys have, move on. Presentations and proclamations. We have none. Now we have an open floor for the public for the ordinance zero eight, zero seventeen. Do we get anything?
Next, sir, the only thing we have is for public hearing comments.
Three minutes per person.
What did Madam Chair say?
She said three minutes per person.
Yes, ma'am.
If we have anything open, uh, open to the public, it's three minutes per person.
We don't have any. Is that correct?
We did not.
We don't have anything, Madam Chair.
All right, then. Let's keep moving, Vice Chair.
Okay. Do we know what's in?
Resolution.
Resolution. Kimberly Burges?
Okay, sorry. Thank you, sir. Good evening, council. So the resolution, uh, we have two resolutions tonight, both of them relating to accommodations tax. The first one is the request for approval of local accommodations tax and hospitality tax fund requests. The, uh, annually staff prepares an estimate of the local accommodations and hospitality taxes anticipated to be.
Just me, Kim.
Anticipated to be received in the fiscal, in the succeeding fiscal year. The anticipated proceeds are, for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, are eight hundred thousand dollars. This amount was calculated based on the year-to-date, a tax and hospitality tax receipts as of April twenty-ninth, annualized through June thirty. Each year, council approves the allocation of those funds to organizations that have requested the funds and use the funds to promote tourism within the unincorporated portions of Jasper County. We have, the resolution has a list attached. The, uh, total amounts requested are seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars, and, uh, which is below the eight hundred thousand that we anticipated this year, or estimated this year. So we have this resolution, which is actually one of the first in the years that I've been here that we've done a resolution, and we're seeking your approval to, for the regimen, for the requests that have been made for the local accommodations and hospitality tax.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'm going to accuse myself as I serve as President of the Chamber of Commerce.
Arthur, listen, Madam Chair, hears that?
Yes.
Okay. You want to move on? So we need to go. Okay, do we have a motion for that resolution? Do I hear motion?
I make a motion approved.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Moving properly, second, that be approved. All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Opposes?
No.
Aye.
The ayes have it. So a motion carries. Let's move on to.
Where?
Resolution two zero two two dash fourteen, please.
Yes, sir. This is a, the resolution referring to the.
To Madam Kim.
Record, yes, sir, yes, ma'am. This is the resolution for, that the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee has made regarding the request for state accommodation tax funds to be received in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. It's estimated that the amount of those funds will be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There are certain requirements that, uh, that the state has about the first twenty-five thousand, the county gets the first twenty-five thousand, plus five percent of the remaining balance, and then thirty percent of that, of that remaining balance must be allocated to a special fund and used only for advertising, advertising and promotion of tourism, to develop and increase tour attendance through the generation of publicity. And because the Chamber of Com- Commerce has an existing ongoing tourist promotion program, Jasper County has selected the Jasper County to be that organization to receive the thirty percent. The list of the requested and committee recommendations is made a part of this, uh, resolution, and those, those are listed, or as part of it.
Mr. Vice Chair, I will accuse myself.
Do we have a motion? So move, Madam Chair.
Make the motion. Second.
Okay, moving properly, second. That the resolution be approved. All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposes, the ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Move now, Madam Chair, to ordinances.
Yes, sir. This is the, um, Lawrence Fan, Plan. Consideration of third, we have the ordinance zero dash two zero two two dash ten, to amend the Center Point Development Agreement pursuant to the South Carolina Local Government Development Act by making provisions to include additional tract of land, extending the term and matter related there to Article four, uh, Title two of the Court of Ordinance of Jasper County authorizing the Chairman of Jasper County Council to execute said development agreement as a method. Any discussion? Go ahead, motion.
Madam Chair, if I might, David Tetter here, Vice Chairman.
Can he, let's talk louder.
Madam Chairman, if I might speak up on behalf of the applicant, who is here with his attorney, Mr. Duke, similarly, Mr. Flynn is here. I do want to point out that there were several cleanup.
Who, who is that asking you? Is that Mr. Flynn?
Now, this is David Tetter, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear.
I, I just wanted to point out that in the package, there were amendments to the ordinance that came forward at second reading, the amendments relating to the identification of a civic site, uh, act identifying four point two acres that was the preferred site for the Public Saint Pacific Site. There was some cleanup language regarding, uh, the development fees and the ability to move from one category to the other in the event the county changes the categories. All of those were in the package so that the motion for approval would be on the amended ordinance and development agreement as presented in the package. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, motion.
So move.
Second, Madam Chair.
We, we have a second, Madam Chair.
Property moves, any second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mr. Bradley, you take over.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we move on to ordinance B. Uh, Ms. Wagner? Third reading.
Good evening, council members. Um, this is third reading on the Center Point. Um, this is an amendment, um, that Mr. Tetter just spoke of. This one's for the PDD. Uh, the original Center Point PDD was approved by County Council on August fourteenth, two thousand and eight. There were two out parcels that were not included in the PDD originally. Um, the applicant is requesting to have these two parcels designated as PDD and amend the PD document and the concept map to include both parcels in the Center Point PDD. The parcels are located along Highway one seventy near the John Paul Catholic School and consist of fifty-seven point seven five acres. Each parcel will be designated as Mixed Juice Residential, keeping the density the same as what was originally approved for Center Point, which is twelve dwelling units per gross acre for multifamily, eight dwelling units per gross acre for attached single-family residential, and three dwelling units per gross acre for detached single-family residential.
Okay. Any questions? Do we hear a motion, please?
So move, Mr. Vice Chair.
Second.
Move the property second, that we have the third reading on consideration of the ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearing and consideration of second reading of an ordinance zero dash two, zero two two dash sixteen. Wagner, please.
The applicant has requested a planned development district zoning destination for thirty-eight point eight four acre parcel located along Independence Boulevard between Brickyard Road and Hilton Head Lakes, approximately two miles east of Exit Eight. This would be known as the CSP Development PDD. The property's own rule preservation and is undeveloped. The concept plan, um, calls for two, uh, full access points on Independence Boulevard, one on Brickyard Road. Land uses are comprised of single-family residential and active and passive amenities to support the community, clubhouse, swimming pool, uh, mail kiosk, and such things like that. A maximum density of two hundred and seventy-five residential units are proposed, which will all be located on one lot for rent. Um, we had a public hearing at the May sixteenth meeting, but tonight we're having a second public hearing, and so, um, the properties have been posted and notices have been mailed out. I've received no comments regarding this ordinance.
So we have a motion. Comments, does? Do we have a motion?
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Mr. Vice Chair? Mr. Vice Chair, if I might, um, although we didn't receive any written public comments, could you please open up the hearing for in-house?
Public hearing?
Public hearings, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone regarding public hearing on ordinance zero dash two, zero two two sixteen? Not because of the public hearing at this time, do we hear a motion?
So move, Mr. Vice Chair.
Second.
Moving properly, second, that the ordinance with dash, zero dash two, zero two two sixteen be approved. All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Uh, on this, uh, part of the, one of the discussions we had that traffic was a problem on this location. It seems every developer we have is a traffic. I would like to suggest that we, as council, or direct our staff, to ask the developer that he have Peter Road rather than directly onto two seventy-eight. Two seventy-eight is a major highway, if you want to keep it a highway, and we want to have some kind of, uh, direction on how we can alleviate traffic problems. And I would suggest that Brickyard Road would be able to take a right turn only, and Peter Road would go into the light at the Head Lakes, and that will leave a lot of traffic, and cause less traffic problems. Especially John Smith Highway being right down the block, we're going to have a real bad problem there between Hardyville and Jasper County. So I think about that this time.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Kemp. Uh, we move on now to, um, Lindt Cavlin.
Hey, look.
Um, Lindt Cavlin, public hearing. Second reading on ordinance zero dash two two dash fourteen.
Tetter? Thank you, um, Mr. Vice Chairman, Madam Chair. Uh, there have been some extensive changes in some of the wording structure from first reading to second reading.
Don't worry about it.
Thank you. Uh, most particularly in the development fee schedule, uh, there was a clarification and simplification of the fee schedule, uh, to, uh, didn't change the amounts, it just changed the way that they were identified so that there was a particular portion put toward the improvements of the, for traffic mitigation that are, I will call them near site, the, the initial area there, with the remainder being available to Jasper County for, uh, I'll call it the, the more indirect traffic impacts further away from the site, such as down toward John Smith Road or back toward the new intersection, uh, at, uh, Margaritaville. Uh, so that was a, uh, significant wording change in there. Quite a lot of the other changes were in there, where as I mentioned before your first reading, there were some, uh, defined terms that probably were not going to be applicable to this particular project, uh, because of its, uh, reduced size, those have been deleted out. Um, there was a question about, uh, future county impact fees, and there was a request for, uh, an exemption or double dip, if you will, on the fees that are paid for under the development fee schedule in here and future, any future county impact fees. It was the staff recommendation that they be exempted for the term of the development agreement, which is only five years. So that has been inserted there as well. Um, those were the, uh, major, uh, amendments that the staff made in conjunction with the, uh, owner developer, who I believe is in the audience, if there's any questions, uh, for him, uh, going forward, but at this point, it would be, um, the request that we have the public hearing in the forward and second reading.
Absolutely. The floor is open at this point for public hearing. Anyone has any comments or wish to make a statement, you have liberty to do so at this time. Do we have anyone going once, twice? Public hearing closed. Do I hear motion?
So move.
Second. Moving properly, second, that the ordinance be approved. All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it.
Um, Mr. Bradley, if I might also have the, the, uh, council announce the second public hearing on this will be on June twenty-seventh, our next regular meeting.
Okay. Heard that? Next hearing, public hearing on June twenty-seventh, for those who may have comments at that time. Okay, we'll move on to the third reading for the ordinance zero dash two, zero two two twelve. Wagner?
Good evening. Uh, this is a zoning map amendment. The request is for community commercial. The subject properties consist of zero point, I'm sorry, it's point zero six and point one one acres and are both located along Church Road. The applicant has requested a zoning map amendment to have the properties designated as community commercial. Both properties are currently zoned residential and are undeveloped. The applicant would like to have these properties rezoned to community commercial to allow a restaurant for takeout only. Uh, the future land use map identifies this area as urban transition, which are pockets of unincorporated Jasper County that are partially or entirely surrounded by the municipality. For these areas that experience new development or redevelopment, considerations should be given to working with the adjacent municipality for annexation. The adjacent parcels are zoned residential. The city limits, the Hardyville, are nearby, but they're not contiguous to the property, so it's not, um, annexable. Adjacent land uses are residential with some commercial nearby. The subject properties are accessed by an unnamed county-maintained dirt road located off of Church Road, which is approximately three hundred feet from Church Road. Um, planning commission, uh, reviewed this at their April twelfth meeting, and they recommend, um, approval.
Any discussion from Councilman Kirk?
Yes. Uh, on this, I went down there again, and those two blocks, I just can't, I just can't see a pick out there with the setback that you need there and all that, I want to go in viable for that. And to change it when it's not viable, I mean, you have places in back, you have houses in back there, like five or six houses at least that I see. And when you go back there and there's a traffic jam, you're going to have a hard time getting back there, and the road is not going to be able to handle the traffic. So I don't think it should be done. If you're residents, Larry, you should keep the residents, Larry.
Okay, we've heard the discussion. Do we have a motion? So move.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moving properly, second, that we have the third reading. All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Opposes?
No.
Aye.
One opposition. Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Lisa Wagner, public hearing on the.
This is a public hearing only for Chelsea South PDD. Um, the property is two hundred and ninety-one point seven acre parcel located along Snake Road. The property is zoned rule preservation, is undeveloped. The concept plan proposes two full access points along Snake Road and one full access point along Highway one seventy. The land uses are comprised of single-family residential, multifamily residential, community commercial, and mixed-use commercial, which includes a maximum density of four hundred and thirty-eight residential units, two hundred and sixty-nine units for multifamily, sixty-nine thousand, six hundred square feet of community commercial, and three hundred and fifteen thousand square feet of mixed-use commercial. Um, this is the second public hearing. The first one took place on May sixteen. I have received, uh, fourteen comments in writing for this public hearing. I think, uh, three of those people are here to read their own comments, um, so I have eleven other comments that I know of, and then I'm sure several people, well, I'm sorry, several people have signed up this fee.
Okay.
So.
Let's hear them at this time, please.
Okay, I'm going to sit here and call, I'll call them by name. Dr. Chris Marsh.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, hello, I'm Dr. Chris Marsh, Director Emeritus of the Low Country Institute. For the past thirty-five years, I have worked with both developers and environmental nonprofits along the coast of South Carolina. Based on these experiences, I would like to share three observations. The first is to share the state's advice of visionary land planner Robert Marvin, who is a member of the South Carolina Hall of Fame because he is recognized as one of South Carolina's most distinguished landscape architects in the twentieth century. Mr. Marvin always told his clients, every decision you make either moves you toward your goal or away from your goal. I believe Mr. Marvin's advice is very timely as this county council discusses whether or not to accept or reject the proposed rezoning of the Chelsea South track. Careful. Careful thought and extensive discussion went into the creation of the Jasper County Comprehensive Plan, which zoned this section of Jasper County as rural preservation. Therefore, I believe if Mr. Marvin were here, his advice would be that discussions about changing zoning of this track should also involve council discussing if its goals for the county have changed. Second, I want to share an unintended consequences related to residential development and local governance. In two thousand and one, I met with an elected Bluffton official who stated that Bluffton had decided to incorporate the surrounding areas so that they could control the kind of growth that occurred at Bluffton. The unintended consequence was that by doing so, there was an influx of new residents from other parts of the country who did not understand or embrace their local culture, and therefore their original Bluffton culture changed drastically. I, if you have not already done so, I encourage this council, representing the, the residents of Jasper County, to revisit what it is about Jasper County's current culture that you want to pass on to future generations. Because of that experience, I encourage you to grow at a modest rate so that you have time to pass this culture on to your new residents so that it makes Jasper County special to you today. What makes it special to you today is not lost. Third, as you think about the importance of local culture, think about the role of the Port Royal Sound in the lives of Jasper County residents. For generations, this one-of-a-kind estuary has been the goose that lays the golden eggs for Jasper County residents. For locals, it is easy to take for granted the quality of boating, fishing, crabbing, and shrimping that is currently available. But because pollution and overuse have degraded almost every other estuary along the Atlantic Coast, Port Royal Sound is now starting to be recognized as a national treasure. This means that droves of people from elsewhere in the country are clamoring to spend large sums of money to move here. An extensive review of twenty years of local South Carolina DHEC data by Dr. Eric Monty at USCB reveals that this kind of development adjacent to a major tidal creek degrades local water. local water quality. Jasper County is a special place, and I hope it continues to be that way. Thank you for providing me with the opportunity to share my thoughts with you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and County Council Members. My name is Ann Ory, and I stood before you last month with some concerns in reference to Chelsea South proposal. Tonight, I have some additional concerns that I would like to share with you. I was born and raised in Richland. That is where my husband and I both attended school. We worked in Jasper County. Our children attended school there, and we are still members of Holy Trinity Church in Granville, where I serve on the Mission Committee. I worked for Dr. Gillum. He was a dentist in Richland. I worked for him for 15 years. And after 25 years of service, I retired from the Academy for Career Excellence, a wonderful, wonderful vocational school in Jasper County. My daughter and I owned Blossoms Zone Main, a flower shop in Richland for many years. I attend meetings of the Jasper County Historical Society, am a founding member of the Jasper County Audubon Society, and of the Ivy Garden Club. Even though I live 15 miles away now in Oakaty, Jasper County will always be my home. I have property directly across from the proposed entrance exit of Chelsea South on Snake Road. Although I'm extremely concerned about the already heavily traveled Snake Road and the impact this proposal, proposed project would have on our infrastructure, our schools and hospitals, there's another important factor. That's our environment, along with our waterways and estuaries. When I was a child, to get to the Chichesi area, you had to go through Chelsea Plantation. They didn't like the traffic through the plantation, therefore Snake Road was built. That area was always known as Wig Swamp, because that's exactly what it is, a swamp. Even now, when we have excessive amounts of rain, the low area flooding causes the roads to be impassable. If the proposal is granted, where will the water go? The runoff from houses and paved roads will go to our creeks and rivers, causing pollution. This will cause our oyster beds to close, and as you know, some have already closed at Hazard Creek, as well as detrimental impacts to our recreation, recreational and commercial seafood industry and ability to consume seafood safely. The quality of our rivers will be changed forever and cannot be reversed. This will not just affect our area rivers, but will have a ripple effect throughout the Low Country. When do we think enough is enough? You might say, just let this happen, and then that's enough. That's the problem. Just one more development until the next one. Council members do not have adjacent property to this densely proposed development and probably would not want it in your neighborhoods, but you don't have to live next door to be impacted. The traffic will double on our already stressed highways, schools and hospitals will be challenged, and the air quality will rapidly decline. As council members, you have the responsibility to represent all of Jasper County residents and help preserve the quality of life, not just for now, but for generations to come. I ask the planning commission tonight and the Jasper County Council to reconsider this project. Thank you.
Thank you. So you may.
Good evening, Chairwoman Clark and Jasper County Council. My name is Connie Ory Horton. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening during the public hearing for agenda items F and G for Chelsea South. Just like each of you, I care about Jasper County, and it will always be my home. I was born in the old Richland Hospital and grew up in Granville, about a half a mile from you, Dr. Curtis Bradley.
Bless you.
Until I was 18 years old. I attended school in Richland and have been a member of Holy Trinity Church in Granville my entire life. The Comprehensive Plan for Jasper County calls for this area to be rural preservation in its future land use. The development proposal before you includes a multi-phase residential development with 438 single-family units, 269 multifamily units, 69,000 square feet of community commercial, and 315 square feet of mixed-use commercial. This is not rural preservation, this is not as rural preservation land use requires indicative of development that fits into rural surroundings. Development of this nature does not fit the rural development that exists today and is projected for the future. Many in the Chichesi area have successfully fought incompatible developments, including a waste transfer station because of the impact it would have on the surrounding parcels. We currently have 221 members on a Facebook page who have concerns regarding Chelsea South development and its negative impacts. Traffic along Snake Road, impact to the water canal, strain on the investment we are already making in the improvements to South Carolina 170. The development's impact will be felt by Beaufort and Jasper County residents alike. In Beaufort County, staff and council have been reluctant to approve major rezonings in this area that would change its rural nature. This would open the door for major developments in Beaufort, too, leading to more traffic and strain on infrastructure. Approximately 60 years ago, the Beaufort Jasper Water and Sewer Authority acquired land from my grandparents, Ed and Lucia Ory, for their water treatment facility. Our family has always viewed this as a shared investment in the region's infrastructure. Therefore, we are careful to scrutinize anything that would impact that system. Almost done. A 20-foot buffer is proposed along the water canal. This is an unacceptably low level of protection. This development does not meet the needs of Jasper County. Needs that include housing within close proximity to work centers, employment opportunities that tie into local roads, development that pays for itself, and protection of our natural resources. I urge you to deny this request. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Ashley Rhodes, Open Land Trust.
Good evening, Council. At the first public hearing, we recommended two action steps for Jasper County. The first, to ask your staff to complete a fiscal analysis of if and how this development pays for itself, and second, and most importantly, to form a landowner-led task force of the Broad River Corridor, the area from Highway 170 to I-95. I would like to thank you for moving on that tonight. I would like to still read my comments prepared for the general public.
Please do.
A task force will assist the council, planning commission, and other stakeholders by providing information about meaningful conservation opportunities, as well as targeted development opportunities that make financial sense and increase quality of life in Jasper County. These types of task force groups have led to much success in the Ace Basin and the Savannah River areas. Why should we take a closer look at the Broad River Corridor? Because this specific area is one of the most significant contributors to our water quality, economic viability, and natural resources in the Port Royal Sound watershed, ultimately, our quality of life. As a sixth-generation Jasper County native, I will be the first to admit that before my event planning involvement and now employment with the Open Land Trust, I had no idea what all of this conservation jargon meant. Honestly, I thought conservation was litter control and that agencies like the Open Land Trust just bought up land that people could never touch and develop. I never realized how far from reality that actually was. I also realized just how many other people didn't understand this either. I went to my peers and I said, teach me. I want to see the maps. I want to understand how this all works and truly get a grasp on what my future could look like, what my children's future could look like. And what I learned was shocking to me. For the first time, I realized how we are lacking with true land protection in Jasper County and that there wasn't a formal plan to really do anything about it. Jasper County boasts large tracts of land that have previously been preserved by the landowners themselves. We are now seeing this generation leave this life, and many of these large land tracts, like Chelsea, are at risk of major development because the land is being sold by the current generation that was never protected by the former generation. Anything can happen if council allows it to be so. From a personal perspective, this is very scary to me. Jasper County is my home, and it is a very special place that is worth protecting. I hope that I am able to witness good decisions made by this council and now this community to form and implement a task force in the Broad River Corridor. It is incredible to think that Jasper County can protect one of the last great places on the East Coast. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to protect and define development here. The conservation and economic data alone stands out to support more conservation in the Broad River Corridor. The Broad River region jumps off the map as a high priority. We have included data in a letter that I provided directly to council that I will not read aloud now for the sake of time. But the bottom line is this: working proactively to define the best places to protect, the suitable places to develop, and how to pay for both will benefit Jasper County long-term. We encourage you to empower the Broad River Task Force and plan proactively before approving any rezonings like Chelsea South. I thank you for your time tonight and for the opportunity to speak.
Ms. Janet Schoenhoff.
Hi, my name is Janet Schoenhoff, Janet Ory Schoenhoff. I live on the real Mary and Ory Lane, off of Milton's Creek Road, across the street from the planned Chelsea South development. I'm not a resident, I'm not a real resident of Jasper County or Beaufort County until four years ago, when I moved here to be on my family property.
You divorced us.
So now I live in Beaufort County, across the street from Jasper County. I have very, very fond memories of growing up and coming to see my cousins, all my cousins in Jasper, Beaufort County, all my grandparents and great-grandparents. It was a wonderful place to live. I lived in Orlando for 35 years. I saw the growth there. I came back here because it's wonderful here. I am against this proposed development for many of the reasons that have already been stated, so I'm not going to state them, but I just wanted to give you all my opinion of what is being proposed, and you know how there are so many concerned citizens about this. I'm a member of the group that Connie mentioned, the Chelsea South Development Concerned Citizens Group. There is a member that wrote a letter to Ms. Wagner last week. He sent it in. He is not able to be here to read his letter, so I have the letter here in my hand. I would ask that Lisa read this letter for him, if that would be permitted.
Or you may read it.
I would prefer her to read it since it was sent directly to her.
Okay.
It was provided to our group, but I'd like her to read it, if you don't mind.
I know.
And thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
This letter's from Mr. Will Cook. He says, Dear Ms. Wagner, I'm a resident of 34A Mobley Oaks Lane, Oakaty, South Carolina. I oppose the planned development of Chelsea South for the reasons set forth below. First, Chelsea South is inconsistent with Jasper County's comprehensive master plan. As provided in the master plan, new development should primarily go to those places with infrastructure and services to serve the growth in and around the city of Hardyville and town in Richland. Second, Chelsea South will adversely affect historic, cultural, and natural resources in my rate of ways. As Jasper County is aware, Chelsea Plantation has been determined eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places. Jasper County should not allow planned development of the massive size and scale, including commercial elements, proposed for Chelsea South, which will ruin Chelsea Plantation's unspooled beauty, historic significance, and critical habitats for native plants and wildlife. Third, Jasper County and the developer have potential legal obligations to comply with Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act and National Environmental Policy Act before any development occurs due to, number one, anticipated adverse effects to historic properties listed in or eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places, and number two, significant effects on the human environment that Chelsea South will inevitably cause. Moreover, the area proposed for development may have archaeological evidence connected to Native American tribes and other communities that should be assessed by qualified cultural resources management professional before any development is formed. Furthermore, the proposed development will have unavoidable adverse environmental effects, including water runoff into the fragile marshes and waterways connected to Port Royal Sound. In addition to Section 106, compliance and environmental statement is required. It is highly likely that impacts to environmentally sensitive wetlands and navigable waterways may occur, which will trigger review by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and require an Army Corps permit. Any attempt to segment a project to avoid federal review will provide a basis for a legal challenge. For all of these reasons, Jasper County should reject the request to rezonate the property from rural preservation to a planned development district.
Thank you. Next.
The next person is Mr. Patrick Parkinson.
I'm gonna pass, thank you.
Ms. Ann Colvin.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman. Chairwoman Dr. Bradley.
Yes.
Madam Council, thank you for this opportunity. Jasper County is on the cusp of substantial economic growth. There are a lot of opportunities coming our way, and we welcome them. We are excited to see the county rise up and achieve greater prosperity. I have been a resident of Jasper County for nearly 20 years. This is my forever home. I am originally from Dunmark, South Carolina. My husband is fifth-generation Mount Pleasant, and his family still lives there. You've heard the saying, if you can't be a good example, you'll just have to serve as a horrible warning. We have watched with breaking hearts as development in Mount Pleasant and Sullivan's Island has nearly eradicated the very things that attracted people to the area in the first place. Who ever dreamed that the bars and restaurants and a multi-level parking garage would far outnumber the shrimp boats at Chempry? Or that there would be mixed-use, high-density development practically in the marsh at the Ben Sawyer Causeway to Sullivan's Island? Time and time again, the current mayor and town council's hands were tied, due in large part to decisions, compromises, allowances, variances that were granted 25 or 30 years ago when the area was hungry for development. Mayors Dick Jones and Billy Swales could not have foreseen the ramifications of the decisions they made then have had on the now. Once that land is gone, it's gone forever. There is no going back. Once one zoning ordinance is changed, once density compromises are made, once any variance from code is granted, these actions are indeed carved in stone. I urge you to be very thoughtful and very conservative in granting the requests of developers, regardless of the lip service about respecting the land and the people, and they may. regardless of the lip service about respecting the land and the people, and they may. It would be naive of us to believe that their motive is anything other than profit. Please let your legacy be that you have been good stewards of growth, that you have protected and preserved the quality of life and natural resources that make Jasper County the special place that it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Grant McClure.
Always have to move this up. Good evening, Council, and Chairwoman. I'm a representative of the Coastal Conservation League. I'm here to request the denial of the rezoning of the Chelsea South tract from rural preservation to a planned development district. The Broad River Corridor around Highway 170 is experiencing growth at a pace which is not sustainable. On May 10th, Jasper County Planning Commission reviewed a new PDD application known as Bailey Park, located right across Highway 170 from Chelsea South. If rezoned, the residential unit density per Bailey Park PDD would be up to 12 residential units per acre. Several Baileys Landing residents have already contacted CCL with concerns about water quality impacts on the Okati River from this new proposed development. The county councils should consider the economic value of natural resources before hastily converting these green spaces to pavement. According to a 2016 study by Clemson University, natural resources offer a great return on investment. Over the last seven years, the collective economic contribution of South Carolina's natural resource-based sectors has grown by 15%. On the contrary, servicing sprawling developments far from Hardyville and Ridgeland will cost the county money in the long term. By keeping Chelsea South rural, the councils opening the door for outdoor recreation uses such as hiking, birdwatching, fishing, and hunting. The value of preserving open spaces for recreation should not be overlooked. For example, research indicates that anglers spend $11 million annually in South Carolina. Despite their cultural and economic values, Jasper County's natural resources are being consumed rapidly. Just last week, BJWSA sent out a notice concerning a surge at their water plant which led to an outage. In response, BJWSA has requested residents reduce their water consumption until Wednesday. CCL recommends that Jasper County Council consider placing a temporary moratorium on all new rezonings to allow time for the formation of the landowner task force. We cannot keep adding more homes before ensuring that our utilities can provide basic needs like running water. Rapid unchecked growth without proper infrastructure in place will inevitably tarnish the quality of life, rural character, and unique sense of place that Jasper County residents cherish. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Kayla Romineus?
Romineus. Good evening, Madam Chair and Council. My name is Kayla Romineus, and tonight I'm here speaking on behalf of neighboring landowner to Chelsea South, Mr. Jerry Stokes. Mr. Stokes owns about 300 acres just adjacent to Chelsea South, Snake Road, and 462, and he had a few questions that he asked for me to read for you tonight. So his questions were, "What assurances do I have that my property will not be adversely affected by the increased stormwater that will eventually drain onto my property from the new construction site? At present, there are two places that stormwater from Chelsea drains onto my property and then crosses under Snake Road back to Chelsea. One of the drainage systems starts from Okati Club, then drains under 462, runs through my property, then crosses Snake Road to Chelsea, and eventually through a ditch system that drains into Port Royal Sound, eventually into the ocean. Again, the question is, with the new construction, what assurances do I have that this drainage system will be maintained and adequate to accept the extra stormwater from this construction?" Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any more?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, it's coming up right now. Madam Chair, these are the podiums.
Pardon me?
These are the podiums.
Madam Chairwoman, Council members.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. My name is John Allen, and I live at 60 Red Bluff Road in Okati, and I'd like to talk to you this evening and make a strong recommendation to deny this rezoning and the development of this property. I put an image up on your computer, and as the process of me looking into this issue, I think I've looked for evidence that we have a problem. This is a DEHAC shellfish growth report, and you're seeing the area that's in question. If you could come just a little bit further down. The area that's marked 1725 is a shellfish monitoring location, and you see a brown area there. That's a drainage ditch. That drainage ditch is connected to the Hickory Hill Solid Waste Management Facility. 16 years ago, I watched DEHAC place a sign out on Hazard Creek that said, "You can no longer eat the shellfish on Hazard Creek." Hazard Creek is the area that we're talking about that is on the other side of Snake Road. And in your report, or in the report that the developers created, there's an environmental impact statement, and I had to read it twice to understand what they were saying. They said that there's no immediate environmental impact to the land where this development is going to occur, but they said that the groundwater and the surface water will flow into the Hazard Creek. So this concept of the water being protected is just false, and having a retaining pond is not going to stop the water from flowing into Hazard Creek. The other obvious issue is there's no place to put the waste from this development. The waste is going to go into that Hickory Hills Solid Waste Facility. I also found out, very surprisingly, that the federal government, the Environmental Protection Agency, is actually operating under a plan to mitigate this damage that you see, that these are industrial pollutants that are getting into the Hazard Creek. So we already, one of the previous speakers talked about how we live in pristine waters and that other parts of the East Coast and along the waterways, people are envious of us, and I want you just to be aware that we have a serious problem that exists right now. That's the most important issue that I'd like to bring to your attention. It's in the report, the developer's report, and this is a state DEHAC document, a 2020 document. The other issues have really already been spoken to that I have raised serious concern, and it has to do with the traffic. There's just no way that these roads can handle this congestion, and the assumptions that are in the report, I think, really stretch credibility, that people can't believe that they're saying that the growth for traffic is going to be 4% a year. You think it'd be significantly more than that. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, and I hope that you do the right thing and not approve this development. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is our last speaker.
Council, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rob McPrayer. I own a business in Ridgeland. I live in Beaufort, and I drive Snake Road twice a day for 12 years in both directions. And I'm watching the traffic count that's going up, and I'd like to address everything that's coming up: water quality, pollution, overcrowding, congestion, et cetera. I've got two points. There was a traffic accident in Argent in 170 about four months ago that tied up traffic on those two-lane Argent and four-lane 170 for a better part of four and a half hours, one traffic accident. It backed up onto 462. It backed all the way up to the Broad River, and I was in the wreck, but I was there, so I saw that. Tony Mills, who operates the Low Country Wildlife Institute, you all know him, you've seen him on TV, he's a conservationist. He works, I think, for the University of Georgia, for Clemson, and the University of Miami, and he calls Port Royal unique in the world. And he's into reptiles. He's at television shows, educational shows for young children to educate them about what's out here. He puts on a class twice a year, fall and spring, that you can sign up for, but it's backed up now for over three years, if you can get on. It teaches you the flora and fauna of Port Royal. He takes you on excursions, you go out in boats, you take footpaths, you take bike trails, and you sit and listen to his lectures. I'm seeing that if you put simple math, I'm no engineer, but 438 single-family homes and 269 multifamily unit homes, it's probably going to come up to somewhere around 1,000 cars that are going to dump into Snake Road and 170 twice a day at what we call rush hour. And you simply can't do it. 462 is two lanes, Snake Road is two lanes, the curves on Snake Road won't allow traffic lights. Conventional wisdom says that traffic lights are the way to get these intersections straightened out. How many, is it unwritten law that so many people have to die at a certain intersection before something is done about it? I don't know. But somebody's got to say, "Enough." Somebody's got to say, "Let's wait a minute. Let's just chill and maybe bite the bullet, collect the taxes somehow upfront, and get these roads made out, infrastructure to contain that kind of traffic flow, then talk about maybe putting the houses on here and take a chance on the water quality." Anyway, thank you for listening. I stand against this project. I don't see the common sense in it, much less the intelligence. So have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, Madam Chair. Do we have any more public comments, concerns, any more oppositions? If not, this public hearing comes to an end. Let's move on to the next. T. D. Teller, public hearing.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing on the development agreement that was applied to the Chelsea South agreement. It was a public hearing held in Hardyville at the end of last month. This public hearing was already noticed. Unfortunately, I forgot to mention that there will be a second public hearing tonight, so we're starting over again. So you will get an additional public hearing on June 27th, as well as the one tonight. So on the same development agreement that you had before, I will labor the point, and will say that there will be extensive modifications that are being discussed with the developer on many of the points that have been made tonight, but you will see some of the point after we have the report back from the traffic engineers and the task force that the council has asked to provide input on this. But in any event, it is the same project that we just heard, the comments on from the public.
Okay. But do we have any other public comments regarding this ordinance? One once, one twice. Close. Let's move on.
And again, another public hearing will be scheduled for June 27th.
Okay. Can everyone hear it? Next public hearing is June 27th.
And it will be in this council chair.
So come with you, opposition. Next is Cameron Murches, public hearing, and the second reading on ordinance 0-2-0227. They said enough. Yes, ma'am.
H. H. Okay. Do I have to do something different? Next public hearing is June 27th.
Good evening again, Chairwoman Clark and council members. This is the public hearing for the budget ordinance and also the second reading. We have, there were some questions regarding fire personnel at a prior meeting, so we have Chief Wells here to give a presentation on the personnel, where they're located, and then I will resume.
There you go. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the council. I've been asked to come in and provide you with some additional information, and what we can see here is that our annual calls for service have exponentially begun to increase. First and foremost, there are a couple apologies that I do need to make. The 2022 numbers were for the first quarter. I ran those numbers again prior to coming in here, and unfortunately, I forgot to write them down, but we are at over 2,400 calls to date for this year, which is putting it at about 11.5% increase above what we have already seen in 2021. Next slide. Medic unit reliability, as you can begin to see, when we talk about the percentage of unavailability of the medic units that serve our county, calendar year 2020, you saw that Medic 30, which serves the Ridgeland community, had an unavailability status of 15.59%. When we talk about that, that is they are responding to calls or working extended incidents, decontaminating their medic unit from previous responses, but 15.9% of the time, they were unavailable. We saw a jump in 2021 to 17.8. And year-to-date thus far for 2022, you can see that it is at 18.45%. So as you can see, the map that is on the left are our current districts for our ambulance assignments. Again, you can see that Medic 30 has the largest geographical district. They are the busiest in the county. To the south, we have Medic 34 and Medic 35, which are serving the Hardyville and Levy communities respectively. They are gaining on population density, as well as call volumes are increasing. When we make a request for Medic 47 and Medic 25, those would reduce down their response district sizes, augment response into the secondary districts. So if Medic 34 was tied up on a call for service, Medic 35 backfills if there's another call for service simultaneously within that district. So that's how we start backfilling the process. Again, this would increase medic unit reliability in their primary response districts, so as we add more ambulances to service, the chances of them responding to additional calls outside of their district goes down and improves their service reliability to their primary response district. You would see an improvement in response times through a diversified workload across all of the ambulances, and then it would also improve service delivery with fire suppression due to cross-trained staff. The new ambulance district configurations, as you can see on the left, Medic 47 would be in the mint-green condition, which would essentially cut Medic 30's district in half. And then what you also would see is Medic 25 coming online if approved for the Levy community. Medic 47 would be housed at Station 47, which is located at 5 Daniel Morris Drive, right there at the Tillman Community, and then that would be reassigned to the Tarboro Station when that was approved for construction. And what we're finding is, go ahead, is the yellow pin that you can see is the future station 48. That is the property that is in Tarboro that was generously donated. It is 5.22 miles from the current Tillman Fire Station and 4.26 miles from the Rockville Station. So it pretty much is almost centered between the two districts. That's 10 miles between those two fire stations. Barring any questions, that should wrap up the 40.
Madam Chair, if I could, we asked the chief to come in to just give
Madam, Madam Chair, if I could, um, we asked the chief to come in to just give you that brief overview because you had some questions at a previous meeting about, uh, the number of firefighters that he was, uh, requesting in the budget. And there was some miscommunication in the memo that I prepared for the budget. We just wanted to be very clear that what he has just presented is requested in his budget, which would augment his, uh, ambulance service.
Do we expect the Tarborough, uh, station to be up?
No, sir. Uh, and as he just explained, uh, although it was listed as Tarborough, the, um, the, the, yeah, it's Tillman-Tarborough. And that's the eventual final destination for it. But we still want a medic unit in that area.
Okay. I don't think that really you, I was not worried about the numbers. Much less worried about the location of forty minutes. That's, I think that was, we stuck a few questions out. So no, I think we, we were just saying, if you go to Tillman, are they gonna be open?
We believe reasonably that operationally, we can have temporary, uh, configurations that would allow us to stage an house.
Because is there a truck there now?
There are two, there's an engine and a tanker there. Slight modifications to the building itself, but it does have two dorm rooms, a kitchen facility as well as, uh, a restroom. Basic, basic station, I mean.
And that's where you're gonna move the medic?
Yes, sir.
So that means you're gonna have one outside of.
Yes, sir. Well, within that, though, considerations are temporary sheltering that would allow us to.
Just want to let you know that I have a job for Robertville in nice paint job. It looks much better.
And, uh, and all of the water supply tanks that are at those stations should have been completed in paint.
Well, the front was for a house.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief, thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, what you see before you on your screen is a fee schedule, a proposed fee schedule, uh, that we have included some, uh, in the ordinance. Where on section nine, Jasper County Rates and Fees, the rates and fees attached here too that are not included, but were provided for in either South County, South Carolina law or other Jasper County law shall hereby be declared to be part thereof of this ordinance and shall be followed during the implementation of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget for Jasper County. So we had not, have not really had a codified fee schedule. And we've, uh, reached out to all of the department heads and, and obtained these proposed fees for your, uh, review. The coroner submitted four fees. As you can see, we currently don't have any fees for these particular reports and permits. So he would like to implement a hundred dollars for an autopsy report, twenty-five dollars for a toxicology report, twenty dollars for a cremation permit, and a ten dollars for a coroner's report. The tax collector fees are basically the same as in prior years, only gonna be included as a part of the ordinance. However, um, there is not a returned check fee. They're, they're different. Like the treasurer has a return check fee where she charges thirty-five dollars in addition to what the bank charges us for the fee. Um, the tax collector does not. So we propose that we make all of those consistent throughout the county so that her, so that if, uh, someone writes a, a check that's returned to the tax collector, it would be a thirty-five dollar fee in addition to whatever the bank charges us for a bad fee or, or a return check fee. The assessor, there's an increase in the copy fees per page. Again, that was just to make it consistent in other departments. It's fifty cent per page, the assessor was charging twenty-five, so let's just make it consistent. Um, public works, I don't believe anything there changed. If you go down to the Regentland Claudine Airport, of course, we have no fees. So these are all new fees that would be proposed. Um, the fuel would be commodity pricing. Then there would be after-hour fees of a hundred and fifty dollars, tie-down fees, depending upon if they're daily, monthly, what type of, um, if they're glider or single-engine, pole barn, et cetera. So those are the fees that have been proposed for the airport. And then again, the hangar ground lease, currently it's fifteen cent per square foot and the recommendation is twenty-eight cent per square foot. Then with Sergeant Jasper Park, currently the, to rent the banquet hall is a hundred dollars before six P.M. And then they currently charge so much per hour after six P.M. Um, they recommend, or would like to do away with the ten dollar per hour before six P.M. And just charge a flat of a hundred and fifty dollars. And then anything after, uh, six P.M. to ten P.M. would be thirty dollars per hour because that requires a staff member to be there. And we're paying that staff member, generally, we're paying that staff member overtime to be there in those hours from six to ten. The picnic shelters, they would like to increase the price from fifty to seventy. Again, there wouldn't be any additional hours, but if there are additional hours between six and ten, then again, they would charge that thirty dollars per hour rather than fifteen. And then any gazebo rental would be go from fifty to seventy. And they would again delete the, um, additional hours before six P.M. Anything after that would increase to thirty dollars. And, uh, I think everything else basically stays the same as far as the rental there. And then the community centers from the first four hours would be, they would increase that from fifty to eighty. And any, each additional hour after four hours up to ten P.M. would be ten dollars per hour. Picnic shelters would double from twenty-five to fifty. And then after four hours, that would still remain the same at ten dollars per hour. Uh, the refundable deposit remains the same. And then rental of fields remains the same. Anything below that really is, those fees are, uh, we're not including in this ordinance because they're provided for either as part of state law or part of another, um, ordinance, so.
Excuse me, just to, go on. Just on the, go back to the Jasper Park with the fishing. Does that mean they can fish there without a license or does that, they have to have a license also?
I don't know. Yes.
No, they have, um, they, they have a, uh, a permit that it gives you when you fill out. And you have to put down the, um, the car, the tag number and, um, you know, driver's license. And you have a limit on what you can, what you can carry and you can't.
So my guys go there and have a fish, the money, and then not have to fish once.
Right.
That's all. Thank you.
Let me ask you this, Mr. First, are these the fees for the, the county to reg, to regulate public, um, facilities?
They, currently, the ones on the left are what we currently charge for, for public facilities, like in Sergeant Jasper Park, yes, sir. The ones on the right, co, are what the various department heads are recommending that we charge.
Okay, do we have fees for all of the public facilities that the county owns?
I, as far as parks.
As far as all the facilities that the county owns? Maybe just to.
Uh, you, you only have fees if they're subject to public use, correct? And, and there are limited buildings that are subject to public use, the community centers. This building, we charge no fees for any meeting rooms in this building, assuming that it's the, uh, appropriate entity to meet here, not for business purposes. Um, the chief used to have, uh, some rentals at his location. I don't believe he had any of that going on any longer. So I believe we have all the, all the facilities that are covered, um, for public use here, Dr. Brantley. But for the farmer's market, which as you know, we still have to revisit that scenario. But in that scenario, the Chamber of Commerce does that rental function for the camp.
The last discussion regarding the farmer's market?
Yes, sir.
Since you mentioned that, is, is yet up for reevaluation? Is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
But there was a committee that was assigned to that, and that committee has not reported back to the council yet.
Well, uh, Dr. Brantley, it was a little, little less formal than a committee. We got together with some interested parties. Uh, we did, uh, we did get through the first phase of that, and that was the condition of the farmer's market. And, uh, our relationship with the Chamber of improving that, they have done that. And also you have fully developed a renovation plan and fully funded that renovation plan. So we know that portion is done. You still need to, uh, discuss the rental arrangement, the agreement, and whether you want to proceed with doing it through the Chamber or not. We have not staffed that out yet.
But exactly, because that, my understanding, and if I'm incorrect, please correct me, that the committee was supposed to bring back a recommendation to the council. And that committee has not come back with a recommendation.
Yes, sir. Uh, that's, that's fair. Griffith's working, and it has not yet done that.
Okay.
So that's for a future day for you, also.
Exactly, alright.
So I also did want to point out that, for instance, the Sergeant Jasper Park banquet hall, previously it was for one to four hours. And then anything after that four hours would have incur that each additional hour. And, and they've not, they've elected or, or requesting that we not put a limit on that one to four. So if someone rents it, they can have it up until that, until whatever time they choose, until six. And then after six, they would incur additional fees.
Now, where do these fees go? Let's go to page.
So they go to different places, like Sergeant Jasper Park fees go into the Sergeant Jasper Park revenue line item, which is in the general fund.
Okay.
So all of these generally go in the general fund. They might be in a different line item.
Right, exactly. Very good, thank you.
Question, I just can't, two companies, this is for purchase, with three different, one, two, three, four.
They're.
Different, bit different types.
They're different sizes.
Okay. And does the course itself get a competing, you know?
Don't, I don't think so. Do, do they rent the course?
No. I could play disc golf. What they, what they can't keep is a, is a tally of how many people come in because they play disc golf seven, seven days a week. And, and people replay seven o'clock in the morning before they go to work. Uh, I know they get ready to come up with a tournament. Um, sometimes they're gonna have about hundred to hundred and fifty people. You got people come from Spartanburg, Charleston, Columbia. Uh, you got a lot of people that stop seeing off ninety-five just to play the course because it's one of the best courses ever. Yeah. You need to get a senior citizen coach and that's player.
Some risk on pork, there is.
No.
No, no.
They use it for pork.
Now, they do sell, the, uh, the, the park do sell disc golf, I mean, this, this that they sell. And some are, are very expensive because, um, you got certain discs that, um, that do certain things when, when, when they play the course. Um, you got some discs out there cost seventy-five, hundred, two hundred dollars. People come out there with suitcase. So you have never charged to play disc golf.
Um, I would have to ask the director if there's like a registration fee for a tournament. I'm not sure.
That's what I'm trying to.
Right. I, I don't know that.
Because if you do the registration, if you do the registration, at least you're getting some money back, whereas when there's a tour there, a general public just can't come in and ask.
I'll have to ask, I don't know the answer.
Do we need to open, full, full public hearing on this?
Yes, sir.
Uh, do you filter all of your articles?
Uh, I did have a few other changes. I just wanted to make sure that you saw the fee schedule. Um, we had, there were two other changes to the actual ordinance from prior years. Um, section seven was the authorization of transfer of funds that we removed, um, basically, I don't know how to say this, I'll just read it. Each department head is permitted, subject to the county administrator's or his designees' approval, to transfer appropriations between object classification codes within that department. Transfers from objects, Objects two thousand through two thousand eighty, which are personnel codes.
Can you give me ten?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, okay.
Okay. Are not, are not permitted.
Hold on, let's, uh, finish the volume.
Yes, ma'am. Are not permitted under any circumstances without the approval of the county administrator. The county administrator is permitted, when it is in the best interest of the individual county departments or agencies, to transfer appropriations between departments, from one department to another department, and between the county's general fund, capital projects fund, and capital improvements fund, from one fund to another fund, up to fifty thousand dollars. That was added, there was, there were two, uh, A and B that were removed, which authorized the, uh, administrator to transfer up to five thousand dollars from within divisions. And that except from, except for the, the B was exempt as provided in subsection A, which was the five thousand dollar transfer, budget transfers from one division to another division shall be approved by, by the county council. Then section eight was additional appropriations and borrowing, which states that if circumstances arise, which is the judgment of a majority of council, require the expenditure of a greater amount than herein above enumerated, then the county administrator shall have and is hereby given the rights by this ordinance to transfer funds between the county's general fund, special revenue funds, and capital project funds, and may also appropriate available funds for a purpose not mentioned or refer, referred to in this ordinance. And the county treasurer is authorized to borrow, if necessary, such amount as may be required to meet such increases or additional appropriations, and may pledge the full faith and credit of Jasper County for the payment of the amount borrowed. Should actual funding sources be greater than projected in this ordinance, the county administrator may revise budgeted revenues and expenditures or direct the increase to be held for future years' disbursements.
Question. Do I understand that the administrator has the authority to utilize up to five thousand dollars without coming before county council?
That's the way it is currently.
Okay.
That, this section seven changes that.
To what?
To.
From five to what?
To fifty thousand between the various funds, which is about one one-hundredth of a percent of the total budget. So instead of a, instead of us coming to you for every, you know, thing over ten thousand dollars, which could be often, then this increases that amount to fifty thousand.
Okay.
And those are the, those are the changes, other than the, um, the, uh, miller rates, which change for, between the county and the emergency services, and which may change again by the time you see the third reading of this, once we determine what other changes may happen based on if the council decides for any agency appropriations. So these, these are correct now, but they are subject to change.
Right.
Yes, sir.
I just have a few questions. Can I go, some questions?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay. Under a magistrate administration, you have medical insurance. Who's that, who would that be?
There, there are, uh, administrative assistants.
Well, I mean, you have many, management administration, which is also sixty-four, right, two oh four oh, medical insurance, you have seventeen thousand. But then each magistrate has his own insurance. Is that for the admin, administration insurance, uh, for administrative people?
Yes, and sixty-four is primarily administrative. There are three or four administrators that all work in the same location, that work for the different, that work for whichever magistrate happens to be in that location. Those magistrates sometimes share that office. So they're all in one department. And that medical insurance is for those administrative assistants.
But you don't have a wage, like, I mean, there's no wages now?
In sixty-four?
Administerate, administrative.
It's part-time, I think. In sixty-four?
I don't even have part companies, just no wages at all.
I better check that then.
And, and what, what brought that out is to me is you have that, but then you go down into the administration. You look at the magistrates, their salaries are, it's total salaries, it's, we're not paying that one salary to.
So sixty-four, there is salary and wages.
Sixty-four, two oh four oh.
Department sixty-four has salary and wages of ninety-six thousand. How much these pages?
I may have mistaken.
It's, the report doesn't, um, number the pages, unfortunately. So there are wages in Department sixty-four. So there are wages in Department 64, and then-
Pull another page back.
I'm sorry?
Doctor, I'm calling the county, pull another page back. I see you see 96,000.
And then most of the magistrates, with the exception of Judge Lee, are part-time. So their, their wages show up under the part-time salary. And Judge Lee's shows up under those, just the salary and wages, which is for full-time And then they also have stipends for, they get paid more than what the court administration recommends, and that's treated as a county stipend. Or if they are the chief magistrate, such as magistrate Baggett, Baggett, Judge Baggett, she has a stipend for being the chief magistrate. So there's several line items that relate to the magistrate salaries.
Okay, and I just, I guess one more. O-74 Development Services, 2606, special partners.
Yes, sir. So that is, um, that is for exit 33 primarily?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Um, Ms. Bag, Ms. Bag, I'm just, um, but-
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you know, you're doing a good job of the budget. You're doing a good job. And at this time, I'm gonna call for a motion on the budget.
Um, we-
That this be second, um-
We need the public hearing.
Pardon me?
We need the public hearing.
And, and public hearing, okay. I was all for it, man. Okay, let's do the public hearing, and then we're gonna call for motion on the budget to go to the old meetings.
All right.
We have our second meeting of public comments for the budget.
So for public hearing, right, um, this, Brantley?
Yes, that means that the public hearings come so close. And we now need a motion on your order-
At this time, I-
For the second-
Make a motion, make the budget be accepted.
So move, Madam Chair, second.
Okay, let's do it for all the papers.
Aye.
Come on, Brantley.
We now ready for five, second. First reading on the-
Did you do the third audit paper?
Yes, we've done that.
Are you ready for me?
Ready for you.
Okay. Um, this is first reading, it's a zoning map amendment, the request is general commercial. The subject property consists of 33.4 acres and is located at 96 point, it's 9606 Speedway Boulevard. The applicant has requested a zoning map amendment, to have the property designated as general commercial. The property's currently split zone, community commercial, and rural preservation. The applicant would like to develop a warehouse and transportation distribution establishment at this location. The property's currently vacant and was previously used as a salvage yard for selling auto parts. For anybody who knows where the McGraw salvage yard was, that is the same property. The comprehensive plan of future land use map identifies this area's urban transition, which are pockets of unincorporated Jasper County that are partially or entirely surrounded by the municipality. For these areas that experience new development or redevelopment, consideration should be given to working with the adjacent municipality for annexation. The adjacent parcels are zone community commercial, rural preservation, and residential. The city limits of Hardyville are nearby, but they are not immediately adjacent to the property, so annexation is not a possibility. Adjacent land uses are commercial and vacant. Uh, the property's accessed by Highway 17, which is a, a four-lane, state-maintained highway classified as a major thoroughfare. The planning commission reviewed this at their May 10, uh, planning commission meeting, and they recommended approval.
Not, so let's stand a motion.
So move, Madam Chair, second.
Moving property second.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Move on to Tedder. Jay personally considered, consideration of ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Madam Chairwoman, this is a ordinance that entrines into Jasper County Code of Ordinances, the fees for certain corner services. You just saw from the budget presentation, listing certain fees. Uh, it came to our attention that there was not a adopted ordinance setting the fees. Um, I did some research, I worked with the administration, uh, the finance office and other ordinances that are founded to craft the ordinance, has been provided to the court. These fees appear to be consistent with other court offices across the state in particular services. I've noted that some of these fees are not applied to next of kin, so they get, they get a complimentary set of documents that feed the recommendation of the staff that we pass as the first reading.
Mr. Vice Chair, I would recommend that also, um, agencies, law enforcement agencies like our sheriff's department, or the Hardyville or town police department, if they're investigating in depth, and they need a copy of the autopsy or toxicology report, that they be exempt from fees.
Okay, so Mike, I did, I did make a correction. It's now included in the law enforcement stream.
Don't we have a, don't we have a grant or something with university? Or hospital, that they will be paying back for autopsies and stuff like that?
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, we, we have a grant offer that we're still working through the contract with. That doesn't include autopsies, it includes toxicology reports. And it's for a limited amount.
Apparently that, what I just requested is already included.
I will confirm that again at the second reading. Put that up to you on the next package. It says, any, uh, anybody have a question?
Because the fee is gonna be passed right on to the people. I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to know that, and they're coming more fees. And, uh, you take the funeral homes, they wanna pay this $25 or something, but it is gonna be passed right on to the, to the people.
I think our fees are appropriate, especially if the law enforcement agencies are exempt from, uh, the fees when-
Whatever it is, we're all so-
I make a motion, motion that we approve.
So move. Moving property second. All the people that have been known by eye?
Aye.
Opposes? Motion carried. New business? Old business, councilman, 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 county.
Sorry, just want to make sure that today is a very solemn moment. 78 years ago today, 21-year-old, Normandy.
Nice play.
Really. I've been there twice, truly moving to see the Seven Counties, how many people died. Or just like to take a few seconds and remember them. Uh, and the other thing is, I went to the Robbinsville Head Start Fund Day, had a good time there, and really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Councilman Brantley?
First, I want to give honor to the crash crew there, each and every one out alive. Um, thanking them for watching us, who was, and thanking them for how everybody's still standing strong and moving forward into the future, how we putting things in place. Uh, also, I want to give thanks to, to Head Start, I went out there also. And also, I want to give thanks to EOC, um, um, last month, they had, um, Facyd, um, and Buford, and it was free, and it was, it was, it was beautiful. Had about over 400 people. Um, I think next year, um, I think they're gonna plan to have an original next year. But, um, I think it was exciting, and something for the kids, they had a lot of games and funds, and everything was out there, you know. And I just thank the Lord again, you know, that the mayor chair has left on the DC.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. We attended our Southern Carolina Alliance Executive Board meeting last week, and, uh, we've got some good things happening, a record number of prospects that we're working with, a lot of site visits, and good things going on, as you well know, and hopefully, uh, we'll have some good announcements soon. Uh, we do have a, uh, beach music, um, concert at the farmer's market that the Chamber's putting on, uh, this Friday evening, so mark your calendars for that. That'll be this Friday evening, and I think it starts at 7:00. So, um, be sure to, if you have, uh, opportunity to come, please, uh, come, it's open to the community to participate, and we have people come from Georgia, uh, even across the river, so it pulls a large crowd, it's usually about 500 people in attendance, so, um, that's all I got. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Be blessed, have a good one.
Thank you.
We're gonna get back in South Carolina.
God bless, enjoy. We attended the, uh, home for service of our, one of our former sheriffs this past weekend, and I was very pleased with the representation that was received from the county. Okay, next, administrative board?
Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of council, thank you. Uh, just a couple of brief points, um, my report, uh, several IGAs in the works, intergovernmental agreements. One is the regional planning grant with the local county council governments, that involves Buford College in Hampton, Jasper Counties. Uh, I make you aware of it each year, we're renewing that. Hampton County Services will lead for that. It's a CDBG grant, provides funding for the locog to do some general planning work for all the counties. That has been executed. Number two is an IGA with the city of Hardyville regarding fire protection and emergency services. I want to thank Chief Wells for his good work in doing that, negotiating those terms with the city, that is executed and completed.
Actually, who does she, the leadership of the board? And where does she need to go?
Go on.
Uh, the third one is Coming Your Way, something you'll need to approve, and that is an IGA that would extend the Rizlin Fire Contract with the town of Rizlin. And I understand, again, through the chief's work, that the town of Rizlin has accepted the renewal terms, and so that'll come back to you at your next council meeting. And finally, uh, county staff, met with Buford County staff last week, and we have some ideas, we talked a lot about the, we have some ideas, and potentially, working on a new IGA for your consideration that would, um, renew and possibly enhance the existing agreement you had with Buford County about the, uh, Sartorana 170 Quarter Access Management Plan. So that's all I had this evening, unless, of course, you have any questions to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andy?
Yes, sir.
Uh, under, in your paperwork, you were talking about the, uh, the jail detention juveniles.
Yes.
What was that all about?
Um, the, um, insurance company that we have has, uh, has informed us that we are not covered in providing transportation for juveniles who've been incarcerated, is actually by statute the responsibility of the arresting agency to do that, and that, uh, we have a large exposure there. So it was a matter of Mr. Benjamin, the detention center director, informing the local arresting agencies of that, um, decision, that we will no longer be able to transport the juveniles for them.
Just as a information, what do we do if a juvenile was saved from Hardyville? Do they get, would it be detention?
No, sir. Uh, they, uh, right now, everyone goes, the juveniles go to Columbia. They have to be transported to Columbia, so it is a big, um, amount of time that they have to be taken up there, and they have to, typically, they are, they are, have to, you have to go back the next day, pick them up, bring them back, too. So it's a lot of back and forth, there is no, uh, facility to handle juveniles in this area. We have talked about it among administrators for several years, about potentially regionally cooperating on such an effort to provide that. It's just that that kind of, uh, facility requires different standards, different training, um, for, um, personnel, so it's a little tricky and expensive to get into the business. But currently, currently, all the jurisdictions are taking the juveniles to Columbia, and they pay $50 a day for them to stay.
I, I mean, I read that ordinance, and that's hard. I mean, they have to do a lot of work, because before they even set it up, and they got all up there, and they heard, okay, they'll bring them up there. I'm glad, they didn't have to set it, probably had to do that also, right?
They, they did, and, and that's the point. Not only was it, uh, not their job, but they were, they were taking on substantial risk in doing so.
Right. Madam Friday, 16, do I hear motion for adjournment?
So move.
Sir? We can talk for a second, we adjourn, all the people, say aye?
Aye.
The ayes have, good night, God bless.